I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held on February 21st, 2012 at 6:00 PM in the Council Chambers Building. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Linsky.
Here.
Councilmember Howdige.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt is absent. Vice Mayor Pfeiffer?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. Thank you. Tonight, we have with us Andrew Hickey to talk about, to talk about, to talk about the Pledge of Allegiance. I didn't really get a bio for you, but I know quite a bit. I know you're very active in sports. Would you like to just come up to the lectern and share with us some of your activities besides the Cottonwood Youth Commission?
Yeah. Okay. I play football, soccer, and tennis. I'm also the senior class president at Mingus, and I'm in charge of all the blood drives, and I'm a member of NHS and KEIF up, too.
All right. Well, thank you for all that service to your fellow students and your school and your community. We appreciate that. So if everyone would rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. On behalf of the City Council, we would like to give you this certification. Thank you for the pledge, if you might, if I'm here. And of course, thanking you for all of the other things that you did. You're welcome.
The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Just to let the council know that we did have a fire over the weekend on Cottonwood Place. It was a double-wide mobile home, and the home was pretty much total loss, but no one was hurt. We will take over operation of the Compactor Station on March 1st. We have hired a new employee, and we are ready to get rolling on that. And the good news is, we'll end up extending the hours of operation to 48 hours.
Wow.
Which will be fantastic.
That is. Thank you.
For our citizens. Let's see. The only other one, I was going to mention the mayor's community forum, but I'm sure you're going to mention that, Mayor, tomorrow morning.
The forum? No, go ahead.
There is a mayor's community forum tomorrow morning, which is open to all the public, and the topic is water, which is a very important topic. And that's tomorrow at 9:00 AM here at City Hall.
Okay. And what, Tom Whitmer, it'll be a meet and greet for Tom Whitmer, our new natural resources director. And he'll be talking about water on the state level, and he's very qualified to talk about that, coming from the Arizona Department of Water Resources. And then he'll be telling how that impacts Cottonwood and the Verde Valley.
Very interesting. And last but not least, I know you're showing pictures of the electronics e-waste cleanup, but last Friday, our crews also cleaned up Oak Wash and Rio Mesa Wash down around Fry's behind Home Depot in that area, and hauled out a whole bunch of transient trash, and unfortunately, some of our high school students pull objects down there to sit around and have a good time, so. But our police department's going to be working those washes more diligently to keep people out of them and keep them clean. But it was a great effort by all our folks, and so our thanks go out to our employees who pulled the extra effort to get those areas cleaned up. That's it. Madam Mayor.
I would just like to say thank you so much for taking the initiative. I saw the trucks out, and I'm very proud of you. And I think it just, to me, I already can tell the difference in our community. It just spiffed it up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'm on the Matforce Steering Committee, and they're diligently going to the doctors and trying to get them to sign up for that program, that they can just go onto the web and see exactly what a patient is taking in the web prescriptions to avoid over-prescribing and doctor shopping and pill shopping. I heard today from Mary Lee Fowler that so far, the Verde Valley and Sedona have expressed a desire, some of the doctors here. Nobody in Prescott yet has called them. And one of the reasons they were hesitant is they needed a notary to sign the paper. So I volunteered my time to go with the doctor or anybody that's going to the doctor's offices to notarize the papers, to make it easier for the doctors to sign up.
Well, thank you.
Just to maybe get a bigger grasp of, harder grasp on the prescription drug problem here in the Verde Valley. So Matforce is still plugging along with that, and it's coming right along, because I've got three appointments in the next two days, and whatever, Christian at the Chamber, Atlanta, I can leave anytime I want to, to go notarize papers.
Well, that's fantastic.
That is good.
And what is it? How many is it? Oxycodin? How many? Eighty million? Can you share a few of those facts with us?
Yeah. If you go on the Matforce website, which is matforce.org, it has that information on there. And it's astronomical numbers, something like eight million plus hydrocodin were prescribed here in Maricopa County during a year's period of time.
Yavapai?
Yavapai.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And Yavapai County. And then, I was thinking the eighty million was down in Maricopa County, but that's not it. I mean, there's another four million, Soma, Xanax is another six million. I mean, the numbers are just astronomical and...
Compared to our population.
Exactly.
When I heard them, it was amazing.
And it's not, you know, it's not necessarily unusual as you look at the different counties around the state, but clearly, by getting the pharmacies and the physicians on this Arizona State Pharmacy website, to be able to go in and check and see if this person has just refilled or just hit up another doctor for a prescription, will do a lot to really cut back on this. And again, as the vice mayor was saying, we've had great response here in the Verde Valley.
Great community.
From our doctors, from our medical center. And we're actually going over on Friday to meet with the director of the Yavapai Regional Medical Center, to encourage their increased participation in this. But I think it's going to be the key for our county. And again, one of the guys that has just been spectacular is Dr. Leon Catalico, who's one of our local physicians, and he has really taken this on as a personal crusade, so our thanks to him as well.
He's the one going with me tomorrow. I'm going with him, actually, tomorrow, and then he can't go Thursday, so I have to listen to his spiel, so I can try to remember what to tell the doctors on Thursday. But it's really, it's a great program.
Well, thank you for doing that. Thank you for giving your time that way. That's very neat.
Thank you.
Councilmembers?
Let's see.
Ms. Dowling?
February 14th, I attended the bell ringing ceremony at the rec center for the state's birthday. It was a great turnout of people there, and we also got a fun tour of the new fire engine. And then February 15th, I attended a focus group here at the BAC on items relative to what's limiting agriculture in the Cottonwood area. Nancy Goschak was the one that hosted it, and she's doing it for her thesis, or a master's thesis at NAU. And it was, it was really pretty informative and eye-opening as to, you know, just what's holding people back from taking advantage of the area and growing food. And one thing that I liked about it was that we were, the city itself wasn't actually a source of a holdup for it. You know, that when you ask people about it, they weren't concerned too much about that. It was mostly just a lack of knowledge about it, or, you know, it's still just really cheap to buy your food instead of grow it yourself, so. But she's trying to identify what it is that inspires people to do it or not, but it was a really nice meeting, and I think we're doing well. They, we're really happy with our chicken proposals earlier, later last year, so.
I know. They're wondering why others don't have chickens. Other governmental entities don't allow chickens. But yeah, hopefully, that'll work out well.
Yep.
Well, thank you, Jesse. Is that, anybody else? Yes?
Mayor, I'd mention one more thing. In terms of our council being ahead of everybody else, the state legislature did pass a ban against bath salts this last week. And so, that's great. But I think what our council did was very important in terms of solving a serious problem that was developing our community.
I know. I think they thought, well, if a little town can do that, then maybe we better get on the stick, so that more towns don't have to do that, and the state will take care of that. And then the governor still has to sign it yet, as I understand?
I think she's already signed it.
It was an emergency clause. That's right. She signed it, and it was an emergency clause.
It's effective now.
Yeah. Great. Good work from that. Okay. I'll just, I have a short report here, and then I want to do a little bit of information about the e-waste cleanup. On February 10th, the Greater Arizona Mayors Association met at the League of Cities and Towns Building to discuss pending legislation, and our meeting that we're going to, we have scheduled with legislators down there in Phoenix on March 5th. And we had reports from Ken Strobeck of the League of Cities and Towns, Tom Whitmer, our natural resources director, came down and explained to the mayors some of the water bills. And then I also got Kevin Adam from the ARTAC, the Rural Transportation Association Commission, or whatever. What? Advice? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Horton. So that was very interesting. February 11th, we had the e-waste cleanup, and I'll share a little bit more about that. February 14th, Councilmember Dowling already mentioned the Centennial Bell Ringing Event, and the fire department had restored or painted the bell, and we rang it 100 times. And boy, that was loud. And we had a couple of little ones. I didn't get their names, but it was like the future, the next hundred years, you know? It was really cool to have them there. Today, I went to Tombstone the past couple days. My brother and sister from Iowa were both in the same town, so I drove down there. And this morning, I got up quite early to go down to the legislature, because I had scheduled, I had scheduled, or they had scheduled a meeting for me with Senator Pierce to talk about state parks. So I met with Senator Pierce this morning at 9:00 AM, and he's quite busy being the president of the Senate, but he actually did take time out to see a group of us talking about state parks. But in 2007, Arizona State Parks generated 266 million in total economic impact, and that's visitor spending and services to support visitors and businesses, to support visitor services. And the tax benefit to the Arizona State General Fund and local governments was over 22 and a half million dollars. So we shared that information with them, but of course, Arizona State Parks are not measured just by economic value, as we all know, having five of them here in the Verde Valley. They enhance community quality of life and preserve priceless historic, cultural, and recreational resources for residents and visitors around the world. I also did share with Senator Pierce that cities and towns, like 90% of the revenue generated for the state, it comes through cities and towns and businesses in cities and towns, and I just kind of reminded him of that fact. He's probably tired of hearing it, but one more time never hurt. Okay. Then if somebody, Jason, you want to catch the lights, and we can look at these pictures of the e-waste cleanup? All right. Let's see. Hang on just a second. I'm going to turn the... So I can see to tell you about it. This is a press release that was written by Mark Schaefer of ADEQ, and he said, "A free electronics waste recycling event at Cottonwood's Public Works Yard was held Saturday, the 11th, and it had an overwhelming turnout, as 416 vehicles turned in nearly 18 tons of discarded materials to be recycled." And here's a quote from Henry Darwin from ADEQ. He said, "Looking at the per capita population of the area and how many vehicles turned out, this is the most successful electronic waste recycling event we have ever done." So I was pretty impressed with that. Of the 416 vehicles that deposited e-waste, 182 were from Cottonwood, and that would have been in the city limits. Verde Village brought in 78 vehicles, Cornwood 60, Clarkdale 37, 21 from other unincorporated areas of Yavapai County, Sedona 20, Jerome 4, Camp Verde had three. They just didn't know that they had their own over there, because Mark had scheduled one over there, but still, three of them came over here. One of them said they were eating at Brandy's, so they had to come anyway. Or no, Georgie's. No, Georgie's is Rose, Georgie's, yeah. So they came over to eat breakfast, anyway. And we had one each from Chino Valley and Rimrock. So the event collected a grand total of 35,353 pounds. And the event was sponsored by ADEQ, the City of Cottonwood, Unisource Energy Services, and the stewards of public lands, and e-waste harvesters. And we collected more than twice the amount of an earlier 2010 event, when we had 210 vehicles last time and 16,965 pounds. That photo right there, our cars waiting to turn into the event. There's Dan Luter. He was there pitching in the whole time. Some of the volunteers at the event, I just want to thank the city manager and Dan Luter, because we had quite a few from Cottonwood. Mark Schaefer and Sybil Smith from ADEQ. Unisource CAT, or their community action team, was Justin Neester and Diane Swigert. And Justin ended up having to work three and a half hours after 1:00 to just help them get all that stuff in the truck. So if anybody from council sees anyone from Unisource, please say thank you to them, because can you imagine a private business donating for that? They also provided the forklift. That's interesting how they wrap that stuff up with that plastic. And there's our very own Ryan Nichols from Cloud, The Cloud, Yavapai Broadcasting, e-waste harvesters. They filled up two trucks. There's Ryan with The Cloud, KKLD. Matt Sybil Smith from ADEQ, visiting with Dan. And Roger Biggs was there. I don't know all of the employees, but the other employees that came were Jason Blount and Gary Simgan, and Casey Gilmore from the City Utilities. And of course, Debbie Reichwrights was there, and Roger Biggs and Dan Luter. Billy Tenon was there. He's a volunteer from COPS. And from the stewards of public lands, we had Jess Tyler, Charles Mackey, who also works for utilities. Debbie LaFrance right there, and me. And that's Jason getting a TV onto the forklift, and Dan carrying stuff over to the collection. And there's a couple stacks of hard drives, but it's just pretty amazing, I think, that it was so well-attended. Charles and another city employee there, and Unisource. So that's my report, and we can turn the lights on again. Oh, that Mingus High School brought a whole truckload of stuff, too.
It's great.
Yeah. So it just really was a successful event. So I would just personally like to thank the city council and the city manager for being supportive of these types of things. Thank you very much. And that is my report for today. Okay. Moving on to the call to the public. I haven't received any forms, so if you'd like to speak, could you please quick fill out a form? Call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 38, 431, oh two H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. So is there anyone from the public who would like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to item number six, approval of the minutes. I had, I saw just a couple of little typos, nothing major. One was Odessa Car is E-D-E-S-S-A, rather than Odessa. And that's a name that, how would you know, because it's so unique. And the other was, in a paragraph, it said the gist of something, and we wrote gest instead of G-I-S-T. So those are just a couple of small typos. And other than that, did anybody hear a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Councilmember Linsky made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I did, those are just in those bullet points, they're kind of like down toward the bottom of the bullet points, real close together.
From your report?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Comments regarding agenda items are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Old business. Ordinance number 584, approving an agreement for the exchange of real property between the city and Anthony M. Lozano, Tony G. Lozano, Edward M. Lozano, and Eleanor Lozano for the West Mingus Avenue Reconstruction Project's second and final reading. Mr. Scott?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Morgan Scott, Development Services Operations Manager. You'll remember, at the last council meeting, we brought this forward to you. This is the first reading of this ordinance. This is a second-to-last piece of right-of-way we need for the Mingus Avenue project. We are proposing trading a piece of land for us, so no cost to the city for this. Lozano's have been very good to work with this piece of property, or for this land trade. Council asked at the last meeting for an image. We did provide that in the council handout. I hope that explained a little bit more what we were talking about.
It did. Yes, thank you very much. I was going to say, thanks for that.
No problem. We're proposing trading. It's approximately 368 square feet, square foot for square foot, his land for ours. The piece of land the city owns was obtained in a back tax sale. Years ago, the county approached us, asked if we wanted it. We purchased that, and now we're able to trade it, free of charge for the additional right-of-way that's needed.
Okay. So for members of the public, they can get on the city's website, because we didn't show this. The council has it. But if someone from the public wants to see that map, they can get on the packet information on the Cotton, www.cottonwood.a-z.gov. No dot between Cottonwood and a z, right?
Correct.
And they can see this map if they like.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions or comments about this item?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 584.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Linsky made the motion. Excuse me. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City Clerk, please read ordinance number 584 by title only.
Ordinance number 584, in ordinance to the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an agreement for the exchange of real property between the city and Anthony M. Lozano, Tony G. Lozano, Edward M. Lozano, and Eleanor Lozano.
Thank you. All right. Now we have our consent agenda, which is item number eight. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items until a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is extension of premises liquor license permit application from Eric S. Glomsky, licensee for Arizona Stronghold Vineyards, to extend the current liquor license to include the administration office building located at 1019 North Main Street and the front sidewalk and back courtyard areas of the adjacent 1021 and 1023 North Main Street City Clerk?
Ms. Jimenez? This is on consent.
Oh, sorry about that. Are there any items that anyone would like to poll or to discuss? Would anyone from the public like to poll this item for discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to recommend approval of the extension of premises liquor license permit application submitted by Eric S. Glomsky, licensee for Arizona Stronghold Vineyards, to include the 19 building and the front sidewalk area and back courtyard of 10, the 1021 and the 1023 North Main Street Building.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Howdige made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one. Hang on while I get there. Well? All you have to do is push the button, huh? Okay. That was the consent. Okay. Item number one, waiver to allow serving alcohol and overnight camping at the Cottonwood Kids Park located at 350 South 12th Street for the annual Arizona Bike Multiple Sclerosis Foundation's Vortex Ride. Ms. Jimenez?
This actually is Jason. I have the liquor license that follows.
Okay. Mr. Little. I'll get the right person eventually.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Mr. Blaine King. He's with the Arizona MS Foundation. Mr. King approached the city last year as it pertained to the possibility of hosting the annual Bike MS ride in Cottonwood, Arizona, at the Cottonwood Kids Park. Mr. King is here tonight to ask council for an exemption whereby the MS Foundation would allow camping and the availability to serve alcohol for the duration of the event. The event and the cause are both regionally and nationally recognized, and at this time, I'd like to turn the podium over to Mr. King, so he can answer any questions, and I'll open the floor up.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. King, just if you, is there anything you'd like to share with us? Any information or comments?
Oh, sure. Bike MS is a national initiative by the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, formerly known as the MS-150. This is just another avenue for the society to raise funds for research programs and services that we provide throughout the state, as well as nationally. This event is basically a two-day, 150-mile bike ride that would take people throughout the Verde Valley, but would be hosted here in Cottonwood, at the Verde Valley Fairgrounds. It's a great event. This is the 26th annual here in the state. We are one of 100 rides across the country, and we're looking forward to the possibilities here in Cottonwood.
Any questions, councilmembers, or comments? Yes, Vice Mayor?
You're expecting at least 1,000 participants?
That's what we hope. We're trending very well right now. Just to give you an idea, last year, we had total participation in terms of registrants was 600. We have exceeded that to this point right now. We are at 650-plus. We hope to be at least at 800 cyclists, with an additional 300 or so volunteers, most of which, as we show right now, will come from the Phoenix area.
Mr. Linsky?
You were doing this in Florence before, is that correct?
Right.
Did they offer camping down there as well?
Yes.
Yeah, did that go over well?
Yeah. We had camping there at Heritage Park, right next to their city hall, and it worked out really well.
Kind of reminds me of the Iowa RagBri. Have you ever heard of that?
It's very similar to RagBri.
Right. Where people from all over the country ride through Iowa, and the heat of the summer, no less, the heat and humidity, but it just, the economic development component of it, I mean, they all vie to try to get RagBri to go through their towns, but there's a lot of people and a lot of campers and a lot of bikes, and it's just, I assume it will be similar to that.
Very similar. Very similar.
And people have a really good time.
They do. They do. We have... We have lots of cyclists who ride in all of our rides throughout the country and will pick a ride such as this to attend. We already have up to five such cyclists right now. We will have approximately, we're estimating right now, about 50 cyclists total that'll come from other states. Last year, we had a total of 16 states represented by ride from about 35 to 36 people.
All right. Yes, Mr. Dowling?
I guess I'll speak, ask somebody with a spouse who has MS, I'd dearly appreciate this. And it's, you know, the, what it stands for and what it can lead to, so get busy. You can't do it fast enough.
Absolutely, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bartas.
I actually participated in one of these when it was, I think it was actually in Glendale at the time, and it was called the Best Day on Bike Ride. We rode from Glendale to Parker Dam.
Ooh, wow.
And we stayed, we stayed in two small cities, Weldon and another small town along...
Wickinburg.
Yeah. No, it wasn't Wickinburg.
Not Wickinburg, Salone.
No, it was Salone, that's what it was. But it was, it really was a great experience, very, you know, well-behaved crowd, which is something I always look at, and it was a lot of fun. And I think this has got great potential for our community in terms of showing it off even more and getting some great lodging opportunity as well.
Yeah, be an opportunity for some of the businesses maybe to be there, because I think that's what they do on RagBri, they're there with different things that they can sell to people.
Absolutely. We've actually started reaching out to obviously some of the wineries here locally, but we've been working with Lana Talison and Karen there at the Chamber, and they've been helping us get in contact with different owners and so forth throughout the community.
Well, it just sounds like real positive to me. So, any other comments or questions? Any comments from the public? And if I forget to ask the public to comment, which I did last week, or the last meeting, then I so apologize. Once in a while I goof up, you just gotta jump up and holler, "I want to talk," or something, get our attention if I do forget, or the Vice Mayor will kick me maybe to remind me. Okay, so there's no comments from the public, so I entertain a motion?
I move to approve the waiver to allow serving alcohol and overnight camping at the Cottonwood Kids Park.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Dowling made the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor?
Sorry, I misread that, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, Mr. Horton?
No, if I might just clarify, we're not, we can't authorize alcohol, that's the next item. I think this goes to really just the local enforcement of any alcohol-related ordinances as to the Kids Park, but the permission to actually serve alcohol comes from the state.
Okay, so, but we didn't in the motion say that we would...
No, I just make that clear.
Okay, but you wanted to clarify that. Okay, so this is just the item saying that they can have this event and use the Kids Park to camp in for those nights.
Madam Mayor, this is actually, we have an ordinance that prohibits serving liquor at the Kids Park.
Exactly.
So that's what the waiver's for.
That's what the next item is.
And for the camp, to allow them to camp on it.
So that's why we split it up into two?
Right. Then the liquor license follows this item.
Oh, okay.
First, you have to waive the prohibition of serving the liquor at the Kids Park. Then it's going to be followed by the special event liquor license.
Which we did in the motion, correct?
I believe...
Okay, do you want to, I think then we need to go back and resend that motion and do...
The suggested motion probably covers all of it.
Okay, I think, yeah, I misread that, I apologize. May I start again? I move to recommend approval of the use of Cottonwood's Kids Park for the Bike Arizona MS event submitted by Blaine King, applicant for the Arizona MS Chapter Foundation for an event to serve alcohol and allow for overnight camping onsite, thereby waiving Section 12.12.020B of the city code during the event for April 13th through the 15th, 2012.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Dowling made the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we cleaned that up, thank you. All right, the next item is special event liquor license application submitted by the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, Arizona Chapter, for an event scheduled for April 14th, 2012, at the Cottonwood Kids Park located at 350 South 12th Street. Ms. Jimenez, are you going to present that one?
Yes. Yes, Madam Mayor, Council, and now that you've waived the prohibition and have allowed liquor to be served at the Cottonwood Kids Park for this event, the special event needs to your recommendation of approval or denial. And the liquor is, the liquor license application is just being requested for one day, which is Saturday, April 14th, and I believe you'll just be having a beer tent, is that correct?
Correct.
And be selling beer and they receive one ticket with their registration.
Right, they'll get, they'll get two tickets with registration, which will get them two drinks, two beers. All alcohol is donated by New Belgium Brewing. And after those two tickets, each person will have to pay a nominal fee, $2 or $3 for an additional beverage.
Okay.
And the beer tent will be set up within the Kids Park area.
Okay, so any questions on that? We have quite a detailed map there.
Yes.
Any comments from the audience, members of the public? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the special event liquor license application submitted by the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, Arizona Chapter, for an event scheduled for April 14th, 2012, at the Kids Park, at the Cottonwood Kids Park located at 350 South 12th Street.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Norman made the motion. Councilmember Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Can't wait to come down and see what's going on during that event.
Thank you, madam. I actually also have some brochures and postcards for anyone that would like to read more about it. There's a website and everything already built up, so I'll leave that for everyone here.
Okay.
Is there a particular place where you'd like me to...
If you'd just leave it right there and they can pass it right up to us, okay? And yes, I would be interested in a brochure. And do you have copies for the members of the public if they'd like them?
Absolutely.
There's lots of copies here if there's, so if there's anyone from the members of the public, and I think Dr. Bob Richards was instrumental in connecting us with this. Was that you? No? Hang, I thought that you had made that suggestion.
Bob's been very supportive.
Okay. Somehow I got an email about it from somebody and passed it on to Doug, and I don't recall who.
The Chamber Office has a lot of the brochures, too.
Okay, the Chamber Office has brochures for members of the public out in TV land. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, and thank you again, Mr. King, for your time. Contract with MCOR Services Arizona in the amount of $32,000 for the design and preconstruction services portion of the design-build contract to provide a solar thermal system at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. Mr. Manjapan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. We're here, I'm here to ask for direction to go ahead and proceed with the design and preconstruction services with MCOR. They're a solar company out of Phoenix. And proceed with that. As the attachments I provided were the contract and their proposal. Actually, it's $28,000 for the design and an additional $4,000 for the preconstruction services. This is for the thermal solar for both the rec center as well as the outdoor pool. Obviously, the system for the rec center will be a lot larger than the outdoor pool system, but we're lumping it all together as one project. Now, it's been a couple of years since we got the rec center down, and we were very interested in doing this. A lot of it was kind of depending on the money that we had available for it. At this point, I mean, this is just the basic start in the design process. They have some pretty good ideas of what they think they're getting into. That's outlined on their proposal, but we'll get into a little bit more and size the system, figure out how much we can do with the money that we think we have available. I think what we'll actually end up running into is that we can only size the system up to a certain size before it becomes economically infeasible. We build it too big for what you need, and that'll really determine the size. I think budget-wise, we'll be fine that way. But right now, this will get us into the design phase, the 30, 60, 90 percent. And what I would recommend, or what I'm going to request from them, is that at 30 percent, the design will really almost be done at that point. The rest of it after that is more construction documents and stuff. Put together the final numbers and then come back and do a presentation to the council. So you'll have a pretty good idea of what's going to happen on the roof. Both the rec center and what we're going to be doing over at the outdoor pool will have a little bit firmer numbers as far as what's the return on investment for this project. I got some rough numbers from them just today, based on the system that they were proposing in the, in their proposal. So I can give you a rough outline of what we think we may get into, but of course, this is without any design being done yet. Right now, the rec center and the outdoor pool use about 39,000 therms of gas. That roughly translates, a therm is worth about a dollar, actually, it's actually a dollar six for what we pay for right now. So if you want to round off loosely, you can just say that's $39,000 worth of gas that we burn between the two buildings. Figure, you know, at least in the rec center, a good portion of that is for heating in the wintertime, as opposed to heating the pool and the showers and stuff like that. On the outdoor pool, it's all for heating the pool. So we figure about 20,000 of that is used for heating the pools and the domestic water. Right now, they're guessing that their systems will produce about 400,000. This is where it gets a little confusing, because they always relate the size of the system on kilowatt-hours, which seems a little strange when you're doing a hot water system, but that's how they work it with APS, because rebates actually come from APS on this. They translate it into an electrical equivalent. It's about 17,000 therms of gas. So if we're using 20,000 to heat up the pools and the domestic hot water between the two facilities, this system, if this is the size we go with, will produce about 17,000 therms of that 20 that we need. That's where you get into sizing the system so you don't oversize it, so that you can't use it six months out of the year because you're generating more heat than you need. So you undersize it a little bit. And at the current rate of a dollar six per therm, this should generate or save us about 18,200 a year in gas costs. It should qualify for APS solar rebate, that's where we get into the kilowatt-hours translation. And it could be, depending on the system of the rebates and where they are at the time, it could be worth up to 100,000 just a rebate. If we, if the system ends up costing 400,000, subtract off the 100,000 for the rebate, so now you're at a 300,000 system, and allowing for some inflation, 4 percent inflation on the gas prices, the system would break even at just under 13 years. And again, that's assuming 4 percent. Right now, gas is all over the place. Last year, it actually went down in price. Other years, it's gone up a lot more than 4 percent. So if you extrapolate out 4 percent, it'll pay for itself directly in about 13 years. It easily has a life of 20 years, 25 years. So if it's, say, in 20-year operation, after it pays for itself after 13, overall, it'll save us about 540,000 in gas prices and reduce the amount of CO2 emissions to the atmosphere of about 100 tons per year. So it's well worth doing. As we've got it outlined right now, we'll get into the design, we'll come back and we'll update those numbers based on exactly what we're planning on putting up there. And we'll do that at the 30 percent. That way, if the numbers aren't working out, if we want to tweak something to make the numbers work better, we can do it at that point, and we won't have wasted a whole lot of design. That's the plan right now. I don't know if anyone else has any other questions. I can, brief history of the selection process was, we had six firms that submitted, based on our RFQ, that went out. Of the six firms that submitted, everyone had some interesting ideas on how to do it. These systems aren't very standard. Everyone has different ways of getting there. We couldn't narrow it down to the usual three, so we actually ended up interviewing four. Of the four, we narrowed it down to MCOR with their system. The panel decided that that was what we thought would be the best fit for the rec center and the outdoor pool. So it was an elaborate process to go through the selection, and it was very interesting. There was some definitely different systems out there right now, some of which are not as tried and tested as we would have liked, and so we decided not to go with those firms.
So we decided to go with the design-build, and how that benefits us over the design-bid-build in this situation?
Mostly because the same companies that are designing the systems are also the companies that install them.
Okay.
You'd actually have to really dig around to get a firm that could design a system like this that doesn't install them.
Because it's just such a unique...
Yeah, it's, it's...
Business, I mean, it's, there's...
Yeah, it's not like a building, you know, it's an easy breakpoint. It just makes sense at this point with the type of firms that are involved in this to do it as a time...
Very specialized.
Yep. It, that process allows us to select and then we negotiate prices. You know, we haven't negotiated any construction costs yet. That's still to be determined based on, and what we, what we're agreeing to in the agreement here is a 6 percent fee on their actual costs when we do the construction, and that's 1 percent more than we paid on the rec center and 2 percent less than they originally proposed. The original proposal was 8 percent, and we kind of worked with them a little bit and got it down to the 6 percent. But for a project this size, I think 6 percent is more than adequate.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the design costs, if you figure it out, again, assuming a system that they're proposing and we think we're going to go with, their design costs end up at 7 percent, which again, I think is more than reasonable on this type of a system. It's, it's a one-type of system, so it's a little bit easier design-wise, but it is a very specialized system. The toughest part we're going to have is making sure we squeeze it into the rec center and the mechanical spaces over there.
Mr. Ilinski?
Didn't A&amp;P do some of the footwork on this? Weren't we going to install the system but next to, kind of at the last minute?
They put together some very basic numbers when we were looking at doing it as a change order, because we didn't have it in the original scope. They were actually one of the firms that submitted this time around. And based on the initial submittal and the interviews, it was really close, but overall, the committee thought the MCOR was a better choice than A&amp;P. They've just done more of these type of projects. A&amp;P's done a few of them. The advantage they had was they knew the building. The advantage this firm has, they've done more of these systems. So it was kind of an interesting trade-off when we were looking at that selection process.
We're not redesigning something that A&amp;P had already designed, they...
No, actually, this is completely supplemental to what's over there. In fact, knowing what this firm has done, they did the solar system that's in use for the student rec center down in Tucson at the U of A. There, that system actually provides the air conditioning for the building in addition to the heat for the pool. Lawn process, absorption chillers, and everything else, but that would be something that we could have done way back at the beginning of the design for the rec center if we thought we were going to be able to afford to do it. But, you know, it's economically infeasible to try to retrofit that now.
Right.
It means it'd be a whole different air conditioning system.
We spent like six months trying to figure out what we could do to comply with LEED. You know, I mean, we stalled the project for six months, but there was just so little we could do that would pay itself off in 20 or 30 years.
We were very tight budget-wise on that project.
We were.
You know, so I think we're not wasting anything by what we're going to put in. I mean, it's strictly supplemental to what's there.
It'll save us a lot of money and it'll be kind of the...
Yeah, right now, the numbers are working out, and again, we'll go through it at the 30 percent and...
In time, it will save us.
Oh, yeah. No, it's not immediate, but it, I mean, it's a big system and it'll take a while, the savings to kick in. But again, I've got to get convinced it's going to work, so I can come here and convince you all it's going to work. Right now, the number's looking good. I want to see the, we get more into the design and I'll see the final numbers.
Mr. Ilinski?
One last question. Will it extend the pool season, the outdoor pool hours in season?
That's not a question for me, that's a question for Jason and Richard.
Okay.
It'll save money over the heating at the pool. You want to extend the season, that... You want to extend the season, that's more, there's more than just gas involved in that decision.
Okay.
Lots of staff.
So I'll beg off Richard to answer that. It'll be one more option.
Okay.
You know, there's other issues, staffing and other things to do that, but...
But as far as the capacity of the system, are we designing it to be able to heat the pool longer season or not?
That's one of the things we'll have to get into in the design process, because whether you're using it just to eliminate the cost while the pool is open, the way it is right now, versus trying to extend the season impacts the design a little bit. And I'm not sure you can do one, cover both options with the same system, because you may be overdesigned during the hot months. It may produce too much, or you may have to turn it off, or maybe zone it. That's the kind of stuff we'll have to get into during the design process. We don't know that yet.
Okay.
One thing that A&amp;P did do, they reinforced the roof. That's something that council chose to pay a little bit extra for during the project.
Yeah, the majority of the roof over the pool area, the pool room itself, was all beefed up. It was like the next size up on the trusses is what it took to give us the extra live load that you could put on the roof to allow for solar panels to be up there. You know, so we've already got that taken care of now, it's just a matter of how we anchor.
I'm really glad we did that.
Yeah. No, it gives us a lot more options.
Councilmember Dally?
I know you've probably gone through all this, but what history do they have as far as putting these in? Is there a, what background do they have?
Oh...
I know you said, you mentioned the project in Tucson.
Yeah, no, they've got, and I should have brought the brochure with me, but I didn't. I'm saying at least six or seven that are very similar to what we have. I mean, the rec center in Tucson is much larger than what we're even considering doing, because they are generating enough heat to do air conditioning. They have several smaller projects. They're not small, they're like our size project, where they've done something very similar. But they had more than twice as many of those type of projects than anyone else that was submitting for it. There were different types of projects. There was one firm that submitted that had probably thirty smaller thermal solar projects, but they did mostly apartment buildings, small commercial buildings. This firm has done, they're doing several of the dorms at the U of A. So the scale seemed a little bit more appropriate to what we're using, so that's really what helped with the selection process.
And then, I guess I, just if you guys would remind us now, we, some of this funding, did it come from a grant, and others it came from interest?
I don't think, right now, I'm not...
Or we just budgeted it?
No. Mayor, council, as you may recall, I mean, not that we got long invested, we were able to invest in higher interest, which one available now.
So that's where that's...
We had some money available. We were able to do Brian Mickelson Parkway and a couple of other things, including the expansion of the pool got a little bit bigger because we had these funds.
Right.
We still have some of those funds available, and that's what we'll be using for this project.
All right. Thank you. Questions, any other questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Yes, Mr. Olyphant?
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, Bob Olyphant, 330 Desperado Drive, Cottonwood. Just two very quick questions, I think I know the answers to them, but I want to be sure. In section nine point one of the contract, change orders. My question is, what is the maximum amount of money that can be put into a change order under section nine point one and nine point two of this contract? And the second question is also a technical question. It says a change order will be signed by the city. Who, by definition, is the city? I think I know the answer, but I would like to have clarified for me. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Horton, is that something that you would answer?
Sure. I think between Scott and I, we can probably respond. I think in terms of the amount of a change order, typically, they don't exceed ten percent of the, around ten percent of the contract value. There's no, there's no limit, sort of firm limit that I'm aware of, but it goes to whether or not it is something that's related enough to the underlying work that it wouldn't constitute a new project. And in my experience, I think ten percent is around, usually the cap that's applied. In terms of who determines that, I think that would, we'd have to refer back to the city's procurement code. I think if your motion authorizes change orders up to a certain either dollar amount or percentage, we can go with that. But beyond that, I think we would use the fifty-thousand-dollar cap in the city's procurement code as the limit on what we could do administratively, as opposed to coming back to council again, unless you altered that. Scott?
Yeah, I was going to say, I was thinking it was more of a signature authority question than any particular dollar limit on total change orders. I mean, whether Doug can sign it, whether the city manager can sign it, or whether it has to go to council, there's limits on where that breakpoint becomes, but...
And that's the quantitative part, and the qualitative part is, you know, is this reasonably related enough? I mean, we don't have a contract like this and authorize a change order to do street paving.
Mr. Burton?
Madam Mayor, they come to the city manager, me, and I review and sign them in, in compliance with our procurement code that gives me a certain limit that I can, I can sign.
That's the way we've always done it, and I think it works well. Council, what do you think? Do you want every nickel to come back to council?
No, I think we recently redid that. It's been a couple of years where we changed the limits around to something that was more reasonable. I think we've gotten over that.
Everything, everything over fifty thousand dollars is a council decision.
Right. And the judgments that you've made on those, I've always felt confident that you really researched and didn't do it lightly.
I think one other, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Ilinski?
One of the things with the design-build contract, there should be less change orders, unless it's requested by...
Well, that's, in theory, that's what you're getting when you hire them for pre-construction services. Now, that means, in a regular project like we did for the rec center, we hired A&amp;P ahead of time during design for pre-construction services. So they were helping the architect, they were going through, they were providing the estimates rather than the architect providing the estimates, which helped, kind of hurt at the beginning, but helped us in the long run of the project. In this case, it's more their construction group spending the time going through the drawings where they normally wouldn't get involved until the design was complete. So you're paying a little extra upfront to have them watching it and providing their input all along. But yeah, and again, it's the scale of the project. You know, percentages sound really good, but I mean, if you're talking a forty-thousand-dollar project versus a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project, it's very easy to stay within a ten percent limitation on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project, a whole lot harder on a forty-thousand-dollar project, just because things...
Kind of like our building next door was challenging.
It just adds up a whole lot quicker. It was real easy on the rec center at fourteen million dollars to stay in a really low percentage change order wise. It's just the scales there.
Yes, Mr. Burton?
And that was a really good question, because on a design-build project where we get a GMP, as long as we're clear on what the scope is, there shouldn't be any change orders except those where we get into the project and we decide we want something other than what's specified in the scope. So this procurement model really reduces the amount, the volume and amount of change orders.
Yeah, because they'll give us a final price, and it's really going to be what it costs them plus that six percent markup is really what it works out to be. That's their profit on the project. The rest of it is all open book. We get to go through, see exactly what they're paying the subs, if there are any. There won't be very many on this project. The same way we did the rec center. Now, they've got their profit built in. Yes, there's, you can always say there's a little bit of incentive to add more to the project because they'll make more profit, but, I mean, our change orders on the rec center were very minimal, especially when you figure the size of the project. And a lot of them were things, you know, as an owner, we elected to do. That's usually the toughest part, is to keep the owner's scope creep out of the project as you get into the project. It'd be really nice if we did this. And sometimes it makes sense to do it, because it'll cost you a lot more to do it later. But overall, there'll be very few change orders as far as the contractor's concerned. And this system is so simple, once they get into it, once we get past sixty percent design, there won't be much left to question. I mean, it's their system, and that's it.
Council, any more comments from the public? If not, do I hear a motion? Where is it? Okay.
Anybody go yet?
You got it, I got it.
I'll go.
Go ahead, Mr. Dally.
I move to direct staff to proceed with the contract with EMCOR Services Arizona in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars for the design and pre-construction services portion of the design-build contract to provide a solar thermal system at the Cottonwood Recreation Center.
Second.
Mr. Dally made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number four is reconstruction of East Skyline Drive with the remainder of the pavement preservation fund for fiscal year 2011-12. Mr. Scott?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you may remember earlier this year, we reconstructed part of Skyline Drive. It was one of the, I would say, of the roads in worse condition in this town. We went ahead and we reconstructed it using pavement preservation funds. The reason we chose to do that was, it was on the list of roads to be, to receive pavement preservation, only a chip seal. However, our engineering department looked at it and said it was not, it didn't need preservation, it needed reconstruction. What we're asking you tonight is to do the same thing on the eastern portion of Skyline Drive. Basically, our engineering department can move forward with the design or working with the contractor on it. We will be able to keep that under, in a small amount, definitely within the remainder within the pavement preservation funds. And we'd like to bring that to council, so that you didn't get surprised or shown anything.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
I'd like to hear about all the roads here, rather than in the paper. So council, I think it's...
Another good mayor.
Another, yeah. Another good project.
Do you want a motion?
I, oh, wait, any, yes, I do, but any comments from the public on this item? If not, we'll close the floor to the public. Mr. Ilinski?
I move to approve staff moving forward with reconstruction of East Skyline Drive.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ilinski made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go forth and build. All right, the next item is possible installation of a four-way stop at the intersection of First Street and Monte Tesoro Drive.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this was actually brought to us, this item was brought to us by the school district. They had noticed significant congestion at the intersection of Furr and Monte Tesoro. What do we think has driven this? As the city, approximately two years ago, instructed the Willard Street extension. Basically, now Willard Street extends from Old Town to Dr. Dehner Bright, south of the city limits, and it's become a collector's street. Unfortunately, that collector's street is just a two-way stop at Furr, and it has seen some significant congestion. We've recently conducted an engineering study, or the engineering department conducted a study, and that study suggested that intersection be a four-way stop, and we'd like, again, to bring that to council. One of the biggest items with a traffic control change like this is to get as much publicity as possible. Let the public know there is going to be a change for safety reasons. If, should council direct us to do this, we will place pre-warning signs, letting people know there is a traffic control change ahead. That is going to be one of the more dangerous parts of this project, but we can get this out in the public, we can get it in the radio, get it in the newspaper, we can, again, get those pre-warning signs out and let people know there is a traffic control change ahead. And this, I believe, this is one of the reasons the engineering department recommended the four-way stop, as opposed to reversing to just a two-way stop, basically stopping Furr and letting Monte Tesoro be the through street. One of the biggest reasons they chose to do that is for the safety reason. It's much safer to have everyone stop, even in the interim, while we're on that learning curve, have everyone stop, than just going out one day and switching the stop signs. So that's...
So will it be forever a four-way stop, or will you eventually make it a two-way with Monte Tesoro just being able to, or is it going to be four-way forever?
Well, it'll be four-way for now. We can always look at doing studies in the future if we think things change, and if, yes, if traffic patterns change, it can very possibly change.
And what I read here was that some folks were suggesting this, some citizens were, they were complaining about the traffic.
That was one, that was one item that came up, and that was something that our engineering department looked at and considered, was a two-way stop instead of a four-way. But their study and their recommendation right now is a four-way stop.
And you guys did, you've checked with the county, as I understand it?
Yes, we did check with the county. The county is okay with this. The reason we checked with the county is because although this, the entire portion of this intersection is within the city, a hundred feet south of this, we in the county city, county jurisdiction, so we did check with the county, verify this with them, and they're fine with this, yes.
Okay, great. That's that little piece that jogs over in some of those houses south of Furr, actually in the city, which is unique and unusual.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from council, comments from the public? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve staff moving forward with the installation of a four-way stop at the intersection of First Street and Monte Tesoro Drive. Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion, councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item is possible award and approval of a contract, excuse me, for City Vehicle Fleet Maintenance Operations to Reese &amp; Sons Tire and Automotive, Inc. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, council, in your packet, you have an item here that we've been kind of working on for some time. It took us some time to kind of put it together. As a matter of fact, before we even put it out in December of 2011, we had two bid, two pre-bid conferences with some of the local contractors concerning the vehicle fleet maintenance for the city of Cottonwood. In attendance was our purchasing manager, Lisa Elliott, and our, the contract, proposed contract manager, which is Jim Wixson, myself, and we had several of the auto shops in town. And the whole idea behind having the pre-bid conferences was to get a grasp, get a good handle on the kind of services that they would be able to provide for the city of Cottonwood. After those two meetings, they were very, very informative for us. We were able to change the contracts and the RFP to accommodate most of the shops. However, we did issue out thirteen packages and only received back four proposals. We had, we had a panel of five employees, including Fire and P.D., which is our public safety, and of course, our Public Works, our purchasing manager, and along with Jim Wixson. They were, they were all evaluated on a number of criteria, including cost, approach of the proposal that they submitted, the location, their references, an actual site visit, and the possibility of having some sort of vehicle information database that could be accessed via the internet. After looking over all the proposals and meeting with the panel, it was recommended by all, it was unanimous recommendation that we go ahead and submit Reese &amp; Sons tires and automotive as the recommended vehicle maintenance, vehicle field, fleet maintenance provider of choice. And mind you, the cost is not all borne by the city of Cottonwood, by the general fund for Cottonwood. It's actually divided up depending on which fleet vehicle goes in. So we'll have water and wastewater, they have to pay for their own respective costs. And then, of course, Public Works has their own, we have our own, HIRF has its own, so it's, the cost will not be borne just by the general fund itself. In your packet, you have the way the reviewers rated each of the companies, and as you can see, Reese was the top pick in each and every category. We did a check on his references, and they all checked out relatively good. We had no issues with them. They were all good and very pleased with the service that was being provided. And you also have a price matrix, which was better than the others. And it's there also attached as attachment one. I have with us today, I have Jim Wixson, who would be the contract manager for this particular program, and I... particular program, and I also have Neil Dixon with us tonight, if you would like to have any, if you have any questions for him. I do want to mention that, including the cats that should be coming onboard July 1st, the city expended last fiscal year, a little over $200,000 in vehicle maintenance services with all the local shops in town. One of the reasons we're trying to consolidate is to improve the quality of service and also to keep our costs down. Traditionally, we kind of shopped it out, and we had cars going every which way, unfortunately. Whenever we had issues, it starts the finger pointing over, well, he did the last service call, and, oh, well, you just did it, and we were having issues. So we wanted to stop that and at the same time kind of cut our costs. So now, we'll have one person that we'll be dealing with, that we will be dealing with citywide, being Jim Wixson, and we will be having only one contractor that Jim Wixson will be directing his questions and his concerns to, and hopefully that'll keep our costs and our, and our issues as far as service and regular maintenance down for the city of Cottonwood. With that being said, I have Jim Wixson, and I have Neil Dixon with us from Reese Tires, if you'd like to come on up here, answer any questions.
So, thank you. Do you have any comments for the council about your business? And we're all pretty aware of your business. You've been there for years.
Yeah, well, we feel that we can reduce the cost, the expense of the vehicles, because it'd be, like you said, a parts matrix on the bid process on that, and that, we feel that we have enough personnel to do that versus other shops that we're trying to get into it. Actually, from our pre-conference, none of those shops actually ended up bidding after they went to the pre-conference, because they, they said we probably couldn't handle that, so, so we're kind of looking forward to doing that.
And it sounds very efficient to have one employee, Mr. Wixson, taking care of that. That was kind of a great idea, I think.
I think it's going to be a great idea for everyone except him. It's going to be tough on him, but I think, I think he's up to the task, he has the experience and the background as far as mechanical work.
Exactly.
He, him and the relationship we have already established with Neil, and it will be an excellent, excellent program for us.
Any comments?
Yeah, so, this item here, this'll give a better control of the vehicles. Record-wise, we get ready to auction a vehicle off, we'll have records on it, and this'll give a better idea of how much each vehicle or equipment is costing us, you know? And that's something we've never had before, so.
Well, it sounds like it's going to be organized and a great idea, huh? Mr. Dally?
I guess, I would just say, I remember back in the day, everything basically ran out of old man Reese's wallet. It's come quite a long ways to computerize records, so. And I know that Mr. Dixon's been involved with a lot of community efforts, and I know that he works with the football team, which is near and dear to my heart, too, so I really am glad to see a local, you know, a local business be able to take part in that. That's, I think it's a great thing.
I agree.
Any other comments? Mr. Huddiggy?
No, not at this time. I answered my own questions.
Okay.
Kind of reading along here, so thank you.
You're welcome. Well, thank you very much for your input. Any questions for them? Okay, so, any, yes, any questions from members of the public? Mr. Alafent?
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, Bob Alafant, 330 Desperado Drive, Cottonwood. A question about a definition under Section E of the proposal. As I understand it, the cost is, hourly cost is $55 per hour for repairs. My question is, what is a repair? Is that an ordinary oil change that costs anywhere from $19 to $29? What exactly is considered a repair, and what is not a repair? A second question is on the overtime, potential overtime in this contract of $75, will the city authorize the overtime, and will that overtime be monitored by the city so that we can keep some tabs on how much is being paid and for what?
Thank you. Very good questions.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, that the $55 an hour for an oil change, doesn't take an hour for them to go ahead and do an oil change. It's fairly a routine program. It's not uncommon that they say, that they charge a fraction of an hour for items that's worked. They go by book rate that tells them, this is how much along it should take you. If they take over that amount, that's their cost, they eat it. If it takes less than that time, better for them, they charge a book rate. As far as overtime is concerned, that is one of those issues where, if we call them in on a weekend, it's not a matter of authorization. The minute we have to call them in on a weekend, on holiday, late night, it's pretty much going to be an overtime cost. And compared to the other rates that we had, this is, this is quite a, quite a big drop in, in cost compared to the other proposals that we had.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
I will.
Mr. Dally?
I move to award and approve the contract for Vehicle Fleet Maintenance Operations to Reese &amp; Sons Tire and Automotive Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dally made the motion, council member Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, approval of Section 1, Introduction and Section 11 Social Media Policy for the City's New Information Technology Guide. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I won't dwell on, obviously, Section 1, which is Introduction of the Social Media Policy of the, of the Information Technology Guide. This is something that has been worked both from Brent, Kenny, who's our IT manager, and myself. We've been trying to build two different manuals. One of them, of course, is our Operations Guide, which he's been dabbling in, and the other one is, of course, the Information Technology Guide, basically giving us guidance on how we should handle ourselves when it comes to our IT. The first section is Introduction, basically self-explanatory, it's introductory. The second section, of course, is a little bit different. Our social media is something that we have talked at length in several of our committees, one of them being our, our rate-setting committee. We've talked about getting information out and the lack of marketing that the city of Cottonwood has. And with, with that in mind, we have been looking at using social media, basically Facebook to begin with, as a, as a venue for us to be able to get information out about things that are going on in the city. Too many times, we, we look at newspapers and see how great our neighbors are doing, Clarkdale, Sedona, you go look at what the Valley's doing, you look at what a lot of other cities are doing, and unfortunately, the city of Cottonwood has always had that weakness, that we're so busy, in a sense, nose to the grindstone, that we're doing a lot of great things, but we're not getting the stuff out. To that end, we've got to find some sort of venue that we can get information out to the public. Facebook, I think, will be a big leap forward to the city of Cottonwood as far as getting information out for a lot of things, not necessarily ordinances that are, that are new out there, emergencies such as road closures, events such as the MS ride that'll be coming up, different types of wine tasting events, anything that the city is sponsoring. This may be a good venue to start encouraging friends of Cottonwood to sign up to the, our Facebook account and start getting more and more information out there. Initially, we would like to have, and I've already talked to the city manager about this, is have the city manager's office manage the account. We want to consolidate any accounts that are out there into one area. And the whole idea behind this is so that our city manager and our mayor are very well aware of what's going on. Anything that needs to go up on the, on the Facebook would first go to the individual indicated by the city manager, and then they will go ahead and post it up on, on the Facebook account, and they will monitor all traffic that goes on the Facebook account, keep the city manager aware of any type of negative comments, good comments, all the information that's going out. He will know everything that's going on in the city. The whole idea behind this, the Facebook account, is you send out small messages about, let's just say, wine tasting event, March 31st. Please refer to the city's website, and the full information will be posted on the city's website. This is not to post out notices of, an agenda or post out whole ordinance. Everything is just small, short to the point, and everything refers back to the website.
Kind of Twitter-like.
You're right. But we want to go ahead and start with Facebook and then go from there. There are some precautions that we, we've put into this, and one of them is stated right in the middle of the background, and that's a, a notice that will be displayed on the Facebook account, and I'll just read it. It says, please avoid making any deflamatory comments or using bad language, okay, it's using bad language, as, as any inappropriate comments will be removed. The city of Cottonwood does not moderate posts prior to posting, however, we do reserve the right to remove them based on the following. Posts containing profanity, offensive, vulgar, or inappropriate language, personal attacks on city of Cottonwood staff, administrators, city of Cottonwood Facebook fans, posting, posts containing, posts containing illegal activity, fundraising, promotion, spam, or copyrighted trademark infringement. City of Cotton reserve the rights to, at our discretion, to remove any post or to revoke users' privileges to post on our page. Please do not include full name, phone number, email address, or any other personal information on your post, comments posted by others on the POC account. They do not respect the opinions of POC. Basically, what we don't want this to become is a law, but we have people going out and, going out and blasting the city, city staff, or what's the city's doing. This is a hard way to go and promote the city and get information out there. If we post something up there, an event that's going to go out there, and someone doesn't like it, the concept is not for them to go ahead and blast the city, well, I don't like it, those blankety-blank-blanks. That's not what we want. This is just to get information out there to people, and we will be monitoring that, and we will be making some decisions, and we will warn people before we take them off. So, just wanted to give that, give you a heads up on that. I, the entire policy is there. We've, we've taken bits and pieces from other social policies out there, so if there's any questions, I'll be, be happy to try to, to answer them. And mind you, this is an evolving of policy. This doesn't end with just Facebook. We'd like to eventually look at other media out there to be able to try to get out there, the information out there. Cottonwood really needs, needs to get some sort of, of marketing going. We've talked about this, and I think this is a good start to really start pushing the city of Cottonwood out there to the public.
And, yeah, so, I think it's a good idea to go through the city manager's office, and what will happen if someone's on vacation and there needs to be something posted? Have you thought about that? I'm sure you have.
Yes, it, you know, when we say the city manager's office, it's probably primarily Kyla and I.
Well, that's, I didn't want to say, what if Kyla's on vacation?
With the infrastructure.
You read my mind.
So, yeah, we've, we've thought about that.
Okay.
We'll be able to handle that.
There, I just saw one that Sedona does that is so professional, I mean, the writing and everything is really top. I mean, it's just very professional, so I hope ours can look even better than that. I think it will.
Yeah, I talked to, name's Deborah, I believe it is, and she's the one who helped me with the, with the social media policy. She also maintains that, the Facebook account for them. They have a, a media person that actually goes over and kind of does a little bit of rewrites for them and stuff. But they, they've done a real good job with theirs, and we hope to be there better than they are.
Great.
We will be.
So that means like that Parks and Rec has one now, right? So they're not going to have one anymore? They won't be having their own now?
No, the intent is initially to go ahead and try to consolidate everything, because that way we, that way the city manager knows exactly what's going out, if there's issues with it. Now, again, this is not intended to be there permanently. We would like to, once we've got something in place, we would like to try to expand on it a little bit further, and maybe develop in the future some sort of committee that makes sure that everything still gets to the city manager's office, regardless of whether it's posted individually or not.
So, they'll just, all the employees will be just sending stuff to Kyla, and she'll be uploading it as the day goes on, because there'll probably be multiple things every day.
Right, and I've talked to Brent and Tyler. Tyler has some experience with this, quite a bit of experience with this, and they're both open to helping out whenever possible. But again, we want to make sure that the city manager's aware of everything that's being posted up on that website.
Sounds good. So, council policy, Mr. Ilinski?
My concern with it is that it, I mean, I know some people that spend just tons and tons, like unimaginable amounts of time on this, and I don't know, I don't know anything about it really, but I know that it can be really time-consuming, so what do you, I mean, can you handle that? I mean, literally, like, people are constantly commenting on whatever, so how do you keep on top of all that stuff? But do you feel like you can?
This is, we, we don't, we, we don't expect it to become a chat room where you're sending messages back and forth. We are, in ten, I think there's a chat capability that you can disable on, on the Facebook, and we'll look into that also. The whole idea is, we want most of the information to go one way, in a sense, we want disseminate information. We don't want to be conversing on air. We'll take comments, but with, it's not a blog for us to be sending, you know, it's, it's not, you know, text messaging back and forth, you know? It's pretty much, we send stuff out, we're not commenting on stuff, we're just sending out information for the people to be aware of.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, I just, I'm concerned that we have enough staff to, to make it happen, but...
And I think that's part of the assessment, although, like Rudy says, it's similar to probably the way the rec center uses their Facebook, or like the Old Town uses their Facebook. It's really to get information about events out, and as I follow the Old Town Association Facebook, I don't see where they get a lot of, you know, comments back. Again, it's primarily to get information out.
Okay.
I guess, I would just say, yeah, I can see where it can get over, it could get overwhelming depending on how it works out. Being sort of a member of that generation, I suppose, or a little bit on the end of it, but I think it's definitely a good resource to use to our advantage. I think it just needs, we just need to make sure we keep up on it, and, you know, because I could imagine some kid gets on there about 1:00 a.m. and posts something really goofy, and it might be there until 8:00 the next morning, but somebody can get on and screen cap it, and then it's saved forever, and who knows? So there are some definite hoops to jump through there, and I just would make sure, just keep, keep your thumb on it, because it could get overwhelming really fast.
And you can turn off the, you can turn off the chat, because I turn mine off. I'm not a chatter.
Okay.
So, I like the idea, because I, like I said, I've seen other communities, and I think it is the way to go. I mean, once the public finds out it's there, you know, they're going to be checking out, well, what's going on, I think, because I'm always looking at the website, looking for, oh, I got to do this, what about it? So I'll look it up in the website, and if it's not there, you guys hear from me.
And that's fine, and that's what we want.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Ilinski?
Could we maybe get a presentation from, like, Mark Zuckerberg to explain to me how it works?
I don't think we have enough funds to bring that boy down here.
He could afford to come for free.
Mind you, our AMR RP will have a half-day seminar dedicated strictly to social media later on this year, and we plan to attend.
Are you the president again this year?
I still am.
Congratulations. That's an honor for Cottonwood.
I just, we just have to be careful as council members, we can't friend Cottonwood, because we don't want to. That's a whole other bag of wax right there, as far as not friending each other, but I know that's probably addressed in there, so.
Right. So, but it'll probably just be the like, right? It won't be, it'll be the like page, not an actual person-type page, so.
Gotcha.
Any comments from the public on this? Okay, if not, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Section 1, Introduction and Section 2, Social Media, Social Media Policy for the newly, newly-developed Information Technology Guide effective February 22nd, 2012.
Take it.
Okay, council member Norman made the motion, council member Huddiggy seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, award of the contract for lease-purchase financing to procure vehicles and equipment approved in the... and equipment approved in the 2011-2012 budget. Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, council, in your packet is the lease-purchase financing, RFP, as it was issued by Lee Salied, our purchasing manager. Wanted to just draw your attention to the bottom of the very first page, where it has a listing of the equipment that we're looking to acquire. There's one item there, the message board. I believe we actually have already looked at a couple of message boards that were pre-owned by the state, and I think we may be acquiring them for substantially less than a $19.5. I'll be sitting down with the city manager once we award this and find out if there's anything we can replace or substitute for that $19.5. If not, then we'll reduce this contract by that amount. Outside of that, we had a total of $601,000 sent out on a request for proposal. We only received six bids from outside, and they're listed on the third page under Solicitation tab. As you can see clearly, Midwest Leasing has the best deal for us at a 2% interest rate for the five-year term. They do have a clause in there that if we prepay, there's a prepaid penalty. At 2% interest, I doubt very much, and according, depending on how our economy goes, I don't think we're going to be doing, prepaying anything. However, you may recall Midway, it's called Midwest Leasing at this point. They are also known as SunTrust Leasing, who has, who have, I think, our, every other lease program with us, with the exception of one. So, they've been real active with the City of Cottonwood over the last, I believe, seven years or so. We've done business with them before. They just work under different names this time around. With that being said, I would entertain any questions?
Questions?
There is a, I just wanted to mention that there is a non-appropriations clause that we put in each of these in case there is a reason for us to default. We can't walk away from the lease, and they come get the equipment, and we're done with it, and it's a lot of time that adds a little bit more to the lease, and this case, it doesn't look like it added very much to our lease. It's been wearing relatively good shape at a 2%.
Sounds like a fair rate.
Yeah.
And you went through your whole procedure and process, and any comments from the public on this item?
I'll look left.
Questions? Any more questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I will move to award the contract for lease-purchase finance to Midwest Leasing Incorporated, SunTrust Equipment Finance and Leasing Corporation, for the acquisition of necessary equipment and authorized staff to negotiate a final agreement for execution by the mayor.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dally made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, authorization for city management to treat the upcoming hiring process for the CAT-Verdi Link system as an internal recruitment under Section 19 of the Cottonwood Employee Manual with respect to NAFTA employees currently performing jobs within the CAT-Verdi Link system. To give management the discretion to offer current NAFTA employees hired through this process the same rates of pay that they are currently receiving from NAFTA, even if those rates are higher than the midpoint for the position, and to authorize management to credit the current leave balances of NAFTA employees hired through this process. Mr. Faust.
Madam Mayor and City Council, your packet of information, we're starting to go through the large process of reintegration of both CAT and Links employees from NAFTA. As this process reverses itself back around, we're going to be looking at reintegrating not only the mechanics and the process of the system, but also the employees of that system. At this point in time, we're looking at approximately 15 employees, which I think there's 11 full-time employees and then four part-time. And again, this includes both CAT, the Cottonwood Area Transit, and then also the Verdi Links. Staff is requesting authorization by the city council to treat these employees and the upcoming hiring process in an internal recruitment process. And this would be under Section 19 of the Cottonwood Employee Manual with respect to current NAFTA employees performing jobs within the current system. And again, the actual system, we're actually bringing on one other system for the transit process, and that is the Verdi Links, which runs from Cottonwood as a direct route to Sedona and then back to Cottonwood again. The one thing that we're trying to also achieve is, through Section 19 of the City Employee Manual, this would actually include allowing, but not requiring, city management to hire incumbent NAFTA employees into equivalent positions within the city's reconstituted public transportation system without conducting an external recruitment. Number two is we're allowing city management to pay employees hired through this process more than the midpoint of the position if required to pay that employee an equivalent rate to what they are currently receiving from NAFTA. And then, number three, treating NAFTA employees hired in this manner as having completed their probationary periods, and if they have previously completed a successful probationary period with the city or NAFTA. And, number four, allowing city management to transfer and credit the leave balances of employees hired through this process. This was the process that NAFTA went through with the City of Cottonwood, as most of you remember, back in October of 2011, or 2010, and all the way through to January 1st of 2011. This was something that NAFTA was working out also and trying to come up with as bringing these people on. We're just trying to reverse engineer this process as best we can, and this is what we're asking council to do, is to authorize staff to maneuver through this, to try to bring them on as a holistic group of individuals instead of piecemealing individuals, or piecemealing just CAT and bringing them in, and then trying to figure out what we're going to do with the Verdi Links. It's bringing them all in in one group of individuals, and we're trying to do that as it pertains to their salary, also for their benefit packages. They're currently all involved in the Arizona retirement system, so there would be no change there. The only thing that we've run into right now that we know of is, if I was were here, there is one employee that we will probably have to discuss some terms with, and that one employee has actually received a salary increase over this last year, and was moved into a higher position level. So, that would be something that staff would have to go through as we work through the process of the hiring of these employees. So, are there any questions that I might be able to answer, or Steve might be able to answer as it pertains to this process?
Questions, council? Comments? Ms. Norman?
No, I think I understand it all. Quite a job to get all this around.
Good. Yes, Mr. Ilinski?
It just seems essentially like we're doing what NAFTA did for the employees and went that way. We're just reversing everything. It seems to make perfect sense to me.
The one thing they did do, and that was, is they did actually go through that internal process, and they went through a process of actually, with an oral interview, they wanted to interview the employees, but again, it was on an internal basis, and that's the way they did do it. So, if we have anything that we want to do, we could actually talk with those employees, but the majority of them were already our employees in the first place, and we know how they perform and their background. We have all of the information, how they performed, which all of them have performed well.
And, excuse me, Madam Mayor. I think one distinction might be, I think, before CAT employees went to NAFTA, we cashed them out of leave balances, and in contrast to that, we are taking back on the leave balances they may have from their tenure at NAFTA.
Any individual that was over 480 hours was cashed out. Those that were underneath that were just, their balances were, and their accruals were transferred over into NAFTA, and we'll be receiving those back. So, it just kind of gives you a little bit of an idea. I think there was, in reality, one employee that was cashed out.
Okay.
And I think that was actually Shirley Scott. So, that was the only employee. There was no one else over that 480 hours, so...
So, this midpoint thing kind of explained that to me. So, does that mean that CAT pays more than we did?
In, I think, all employees except for one, again, there was one employee that was increased in salary. The majority of them were, I think that they were, there were a lot of them already over the midpoint of their salary as it was.
When they were with us?
Yes.
Okay.
So, when they were already, when they were transferred over to NAFTA, and now they'll be coming back, there'll be a lot of them over the midpoint, just as they, when they left.
That's because some of them have been with us, like 14, 15 years, a long time?
A long time.
And is that what would cause that?
Well, actually, it could be that even over a period of five years, four to five years, could have put somebody over that midpoint salary level, so...
Gotcha. Because they earned it, I mean?
Yes, and that was through the merit process that we go through with our employees.
Right, so that makes sense now.
And then I think, NAFTA, as far as I remember, I don't think there was any salary increases over the last year. I think they had all frozen positions, but again, there was the one, there's one individual, they moved from a driver position into a supervisory-level position, and that individual, we're going to have to try to figure out what we're going to do with.
Okay, because you don't need that position now?
Right, and again, as council had authorized staff to move forward with the transportation manager position, which we have not hired yet, that's, our hope is, is that the transportation manager will be able to conduct supervisory processes within the system itself and be able to conduct, you know, the employees in the proper way, so we wouldn't need the actual supervisors. The big problem that they have is that, I think, in a lot of senses, their manager would be up in Flagstaff, and so therefore, they had to select a supervisor to actually help and assist in this area while he was up in Flagstaff. And so, that's, I think, part of the reason why they wanted a supervisor. But I think most of our positions will all be dispatchers and drivers.
Okay, Steve?
With my apologies, sorry if you'll indulge me with more extracurricular, free-thinking comment. We've discussed that at some point, as we talk about staffing, it really is a council function, since these positions are no longer part of the city service, since CAT moved into NAFTA, that the council should be the one, in my view anyway, to sign off on the reconstitution of CAT and the positions that will require. Of course, staff will come to you with an informed recommendation and reasons for that, but I guess sooner rather than later, we'll be asking you to approve the positions that it will take to operate CAT and the Links.
So, this is a policy, and you just need, any comments from the public on this? Did I ask you yet? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to authorize city management to treat the upcoming hiring process for the CAT-Links, Verdi-Links system as an internal recruitment under Section 19 of the Cottonwood Employee Manual with respect to NAFTA employees currently performing jobs within the CAT-Verdi Link system. To give management the discretion to offer current NAFTA employees hired through this process the same rates of pay that they are currently receiving from NAFTA, even if those rates are higher than the midpoint for the position, and to authorize management to create the current leave balances of NAFTA employees hired through this process. Second.
All right, Councilmember Norman made the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for...
Sorry, you should never let the city attorney write the motions.
We should have known better, et cetera, et cetera.
But it's a really good, thorough, you know, motion, so it's all good. All right, the last item is claims and adjustments. Any questions or comments on the claims, council? Any comments from the public? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move to adjourn the claims.
Second.
Okay, the Vice Mayor made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
The Mayor made the motion. Miss Councilmember Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.